Morning everybody and welcome to today's Cabinet meeting. Apologies for the delay this morning, we've been outside marking Armed Forces this week, so we've been flying the flag and pleased to say the whole Cabinet was able to do it today. So I'd like to welcome members, those in the public gallery, although I don't seem to see any at the moment, and those watching the live stream this morning. So before we begin, in the event of an evacuation alarm sounding, everyone should vacate the building through the nearest exit and proceed directly to the Assembly Point. So we'll kick off this morning with item one, as ever. Apologies for absence, Pippa.
Thank you Chair, yes we have apologies from councillor Coles and councillor Bisby and also from Sue Grace and Jodie Atrey and we have Emilia Watkins here, Emeline Watkins here as a substitute.
Thank you very much, I should also say it makes a change to be back in the council chamber, it's like we're all very close, which I'm sure we'll manage. So, item two, are there any declarations of interest from members this morning? No, that's good, we'll proceed. So, minutes of the shareholder Cabinet Committee is item three, that was held on the 15th of December 2021 and the Cabinet meeting on the 19th of April 2022. Are the minutes agreed as a true and accurate record? Do you have a proposal or a seconda? Don't all jump at once. Lynne Ayers, thank you very much, a seconda for those? Oh, Steve, thank you very much. Steve Allen, there we go, Pippa, thanks. Now, are there any petitions to be presented to Cabinet this morning at item number four? Nope, appears not. Okay, thank you very much. I thought Steve was going on a walkabout for a moment, just grabbing a bunch of papers, which there are spare copies. Okay, so we will move on to item number five, which is the interim report of the task and finish group to examine the issues with car cruising in Peterborough. You'll find that report on pages 11 to 34 of today's agenda pack. Steve Allen may want to introduce this, but I understand that Ian Phillips will be addressing the report and I believe councillor Hogg, as Chair of the Finnish task and finish group, I think it was, is also in attendance as well. So, Steve, do you want to kick this off?
Yes indeed, thank you Leader, good morning everyone. As you've stated, this is the interim report of the task and finish group to examine the issue with car cruising. Recommendations, one to 10 on page 11 of the agenda paper. And we are seeking endorsement of the recommendations proposed by the Communities Scrutiny Committee, and this is to address the unauthorised car meets in Peterborough and the impact of antisocial use of vehicles to the detriment of residents' amenities. Thank you. As the Leader has pointed out, we have Ian Phillips and I believe councillor Hogg to take any questions.
Off and on. So, Ian, do you want to pick up?
Thank you and good morning everybody. Very pleased to be here with councillor Hogg, who's been part of our cross-party task and finish group that's been looking at the issues around car cruising in Peterborough. It's fair to say, car cruising causes a significant problem for a number of different communities throughout Peterborough. We've had a very thorough review of the issues, we've been speaking to residents to get their views, councillor Hogg and other councillors have spoken to businesses to understand what impact it has on them, and we've also been working closely with the police to see what they can do in terms of enforcement and prevention. This is a report of the task and finish group rather than officer report, so councillor Hogg, perhaps I could ask you to present your, on behalf of the group, your councillor's report.
Okay, thank you. Just to clear up, I'm not the Chair of the group, the Chair, the Chair, it's, well was, councillor Howell is now councillor Stevenson, but because of a change in circumstances, I believe is no longer able to be on the task and finish group. In fact, we've had quite a number of people leave the group in the time that the group has been in existence. So, you know, the report was put before the relevant committee, in fact I was personally asked to present on that occasion as well. This is just an interim report. It's safe to say that this has been a very long-winded process and, you know, that there is a number of complications involved in tackling this issue, like I suppose most task and finish groups have to look at. I think it's safe to say that Peterborough has been, is now seen across the community, the car cruising community as being a soft option. We seem to have a lot of meets with huge numbers of attendees coming from far and wide. I think that's possibly due to the fact that maybe in their locality, they're getting a much more robust approach to their activities, whereas in Peterborough they seem to be kind of almost left to it. And I think it's now got to an unmanageable state, specifically the kind of the secondary aspect to car cruising, which is the drifting that happens around Stapleton Road. And, you know, as you see in the report, there are moves afoot to get some traffic calming put on that estate, which, you know, will certainly alleviate the situation, but whether or not that is panacea is to be seen, I suspect that it might mean that there is a certain amount of dispersal. So I think, you know, the work still needs, there's still plenty of work that needs to be done in tackling this.
Thank you councillor Hogg. So members, I'm sure there are a number of questions and I'll kick off with John Howard first. Thank you John.
Thank you Leader. Yeah, you've said that the task and finish group have spoken to residents, which is really good to hear, but what were their views on how car cruising affects them?
So as I said, there's two elements to this. There's the sort of static meets, which aren't necessarily hugely static in the fact that people do tend to sort of drive around. There's a huge amount of noise created by these cars. A lot of them have got modified, what they call mappings, of their engines that produce pops and bangs. The sound is very akin to that of a gun range, very, very loud indeed. And specifically in my ward, and what they call the Apex Car Park, which we call Pleasure Fair Meadow Car Park, you're getting sort of 500 cars, and they're coming and going, they're going up and down the lanes etc. A huge amount of noise is generated from this, and then there's loud in-car entertainment stereos as well adding to that mix. And then also the kind of the burning of rubber where there's huge plumes of smoke that goes up. The second element to that is the Stapleton Road venue, where they do a lot of drifting, and that can go into the early hours of the morning. Again, as I said, there's a huge amount of noise generated from that, there's a certain amount of, a huge amount of burning tyres that drifts across, although it's an industrial estate, there is industrial, sorry, residential estates nearby where the smoke permeates into, you know, people in the summer if they've got the windows open etc. So, you know, there are a lot of people who are finding it difficult to sleep because of the noise generated, and also that, you know, just the smell is intolerable.
Thank you. Lynne Ayers please.
Thank you. I've got two questions, do you want me to ask them both at the same time?
By all means, ask them together, yeah.
Right, thank you very much. One of the things that I'm particularly concerned about is when I read things like, "The unauthorised events are not subject to health and safety risk assessments, and the organisers of these events appear not to wish to assume full responsibility for ensuring the events are either safe or orderly." And I think it follows from that, does it not, that nobody there is insured. By that I mean, the people who are doing the car cruising, the people who are attending, should anything happen to them, and like an injury or anything like that, or even a death probably, that nobody there is actually insured. And so there'll be no claims possible. And I just wondered whether that particular point is made pretty straight to the people who do attend these events, whether they realise it. Because most people don't realise that sort of thing. And they think if they're damaged by somebody, that they will automatically get paid out by somebody. And I don't think that's the case here. I would like to hear from you whether that's something that we actually communicate, because I think it's terribly important. And of course, it may help you with my second question, which is about the role that businesses have in helping to prevent or mitigate car cruising events, because they need to, they would not want to think that they were getting themselves into situations in allowing events whereby it might go a whereby it might go upon their insurance. So, can you please answer that for me? Thank you.
Well, so, in terms of, the largest location for the meets is council land, it's a council car park, so that would be the first business that needs to be thinking about their liability in these things. Specifically, you know, just because we don't enforce, you know, are we, you know, almost kind of giving permission for these events to happen? We know that they happen on a regular basis, they are widely advertised, and yet nothing is done in regards to enforcing them, certainly from the council side of things, and minimally more so in terms of the police, because, you know, as far as they're concerned, the council car parks are not public roads, and so it's less of a priority for them. In terms of the insurance, you're absolutely right, you know, most car policies exclude racing. I would also suggest that maybe a number of the cars are modified to a point where they're, where if they haven't notified their insurance company of the fact that they've been modified in that way, then again, yes, their car insurance is null and void. So, yes, that is a very real danger. I believe that there is a, you know, for innocent bystanders, there is an industry scheme that allows paying out for people that are injured by non-insured drivers, but it's far from ideal, absolutely far from ideal. We need to grasp this nettle is the point, and we need to deal with it.
You want to come back, councillor?
Because I did see that there was mention as well, that you have, very sensibly, I thought, looked to see whether there was somewhere on a piece of our land where we could actually have a legal thing happen that was acceptable, but you haven't been able to find anywhere within the Peterborough City Council area. Is there any reason why we couldn't do something probably with Fenn Land or somebody like that who might have, as it were, flatter pieces of land, a more open land than we have ourselves, left in our local authority?
So, I think the trouble is that, as it stands at the moment, they turn up to the Pleasure Fair Car Park, they're not challenged in any way, they have their meet, they do what they want, they don't have to fill in health and safety forms, et cetera, et cetera. They don't have to produce insurance for the event, et cetera, et cetera. So, until you close that avenue to them, why would they want to get involved in a load of paperwork and a load of expense to do, you know, a more legal, safer situation? They're quite happy doing what they're doing, and they're not being challenged on it, is the bottom line. The only way that we would be able to encourage them to do so, to get involved in that, you know, in a proper procedure, would be to close off every other avenue to them.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Allen has a related question, I believe.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, leader. Thanks for the opportunity. I mean, this does fall under my portfolio, but I hadn't been directly involved in the task and finish group or indeed the preparation of the report. And as I see it, the issue is we are unable to implement closure of locations such as Pleasure Fair Meadows because they are public car parks. So, the only way to stop this would be physical prevention, i.e. the police. Maybe a question for Ian. Do the police have any appetite for stopping these things occurring?
Thank you. It's a really good question and one of the things that we've spoken to the police about within our task and finish group, really. The police aren't here to defend themselves, but what I know that they would say if they were here is, yes, they would have a lot of appetite for dealing with people who are breaking the law. However, these things often occur on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, and the police work on a threat, risk, harm basis and have to cover a huge number of priorities across the city. And unfortunately, there are always, or often, higher priorities that engage the police's limited resources, which means things like antisocial driving, nuisance though it is, does not feature as high on their radar for the resources they have available. We've set out in our reports some options where we think the council and the police can work together to start to make this more difficult, things like public protection orders around specific areas of land, where we can work with the police, where we can perhaps get evidence from the police if they are going there, from CCTV or body cams, which we could then look to subsequently enforce post-event. So, I think there are things that can be done. It does take a partnership approach, it's not something that the council can do on its own, and regrettably, the police just simply wouldn't have the resource to do what perhaps we would like them to do, given other priorities.
Can I just add to that? So, this is why we have called upon the Police and Crime Commissioner to work closely with the Chief Constable to compile a report on how the police would want to tackle this issue. As Ian rightly says, you know, our police force are stretched in all directions. I think it's fair to say that everybody's fairly aware of that, and this is not seen as a priority. One of the reasons for that is the number of calls to service. People are just fed up with just ringing up the police and complaining about this, and then, and then nothing happening, so they've stopped ringing. It doesn't mean that the annoyance has gone away, it doesn't mean that their lives have stopped being affected, they've just given up on ringing through to the police. You know, there are issues with the 101 call-in service with the police, which I believe the Chief Constable is, sorry, the Crime Commissioner is trying to address, and it's one of his priorities. I'm on the Police and Crime Panel, so I'm maybe a little bit more aware of these things than maybe most. But, you know, these things are all interconnected, is the point, and, you know, we need to work very closely with the police. I don't think it's a question of just saying, this is a police issue and it's got nothing to do with the council. The council have its part to play. There are things that could be done in terms of, you know, maybe ANPR cameras putting on the car park. I know that was, you know, we were looking to maybe develop that car park, so whether or not an investment in ANPR cameras on it, because ultimately, you've got 500 cars turning up on a Friday night, you know, they're not paying car parking charges, you know, there could be a considerable amount of revenue that comes out of the back of this. So, yeah.
Thanks a lot. Conversation about the police on that, and I'm sure Daryl Preston will take an interest, but it should be noted that John Peach, who's the Deputy Police and Crime Commissioner, is present today and will no doubt take this feedback he's hearing back to the Police and Crime Commissioner and indeed the Chief Constable. Couple of questions left. One is from Ishi, and one is from Marco, and then that's the only people I have, really, because I think all the other points have been addressed. So, Ishi, do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, councillor Hogg, you mentioned about the impact on residents. I just wanted to know whether the task and finish group have spoken to the car cruise community and what their views are about the impact they have on residents and businesses.
Okay, so unsurprisingly, the car cruising community, whilst they had been approached, were not really forthcoming in terms of engaging with the committee. Councillor Howell, sorry, councillor Stevenson has done a lot of work reaching out to these groups. I've spoken to the organiser of at least one of these groups to get some sort of background knowledge for the, so that, you know, that could be inputted into the scheme. But, yes, I mean, it's far from ideal, but, you know, the fact is that they basically don't want to talk to us is the problem. So, yes.
Thank you. And councillor Charesty then finally.
Thank you, leader. My first, I've got three questions. My first question is, in the recommendation number six, you talk about Pleasure Fair Meadow Car Park, absolutely fine, no problem with that recommendation, but why did you not include the Vivacity Car Park in Hampton? I declare an interest, it's my ward, and I also declare that it's just as big a nuisance as it is in the Pleasure Fair. So, you know, I mean, you can answer that now, or you can go and deal with it.
Essentially, this is about bolting on that car park to an existing PCSO, PSPO, which is already in force in Woodston. And we have mentioned the Hampton area in the report. I'm not entirely sure that it's as big a problem as, but still a significant problem nonetheless. And, you know, I'm certainly, as far as I'm concerned, it would be really good to get a, maybe a Hampton councillor on the group. I believe that councillor Sainsbury is now coming off the group because of cabinet responsibilities. So, it would be really nice to maybe see if we could get a Hampton voice on that committee.
Well, I did offer, was told that I couldn't join it because I was an executive member.
Yeah, no, indeed.
Anyway.
Have we got any councillors that are not on the cabinet that are?
Yes. I'm sure we can organise.
I'm sure, put them together, yes, that would be really good.
Okay. My second question, and you've already alluded to part of it, is that, for example, if you want to park in Sainsbury's, Waitrose, Beale's Car Park, there is technology that reads your number plate when you drive in and reads your number plate when you drive out. So, why don't we put parking overnight in the Fair Meadow Car Park at £100 a night, and we put the technology in and we find every single person that doesn't pay the £100 a night, £100. That's £50,000 of income per night if there's 500 cars. I think it would go away very quickly. So, can we have a look at that? Why we can't do that? You know, that's the question, is why can we not do that? You know?
I would guess the answer would be capital expenditure of that project.
Technology is peanuts, you know, to put that kind of technology in, it literally is peanuts. And we've got wifi, eventually we'll have free wifi in the city centre if we can ever get that organised.
I would suggest it's slightly more than peanuts, you know, it can cost £1,000 to put a drop curb in for your driveway, so putting in a load of technology and cameras and having the electricity to that point, et cetera. Civil engineering, you know, you can add two zeros to a figure that you think of.
Instead of arguing what the price is, why don't we find out what the cost is? Because that might be a solution.
I would dearly love to.
That might be a solution. Okay, that's both questions in one, so thank you very much.
I was expecting another one. Okay, I think we've exercised that somewhat. All options, you know, whether it's cameras or whatever it is, can be discussed, but I'm actually going to say, I don't think the problem is the car cruises or the car meets, I think it's the supervision of them or lack of it. So, for me, it can carry on where it is, but the behaviour can't carry on. I'm just giving my two pennies worth. So, it would actually be better if we invested some officer time in supervising the car meets, so that they don't do the popping and banging and the wheel spins and everything else, because if you move it from that car park, it's just going to go somewhere else. So, is it not better to have a meet? Because I have no problem with these kids doing their cars, I think it's great, it's good to have a hobby, but the problem seems to be bad behaviour and noise and the other things. So, if we charged a pound car parking fee for every car that turned up, it would pay for an officer or officers to supervise the event, and those that are found in breach would be banned from coming again because we would have their registration number, just thinking out of the box, as Marco's favourite expression. So, that's another thing to consider for the chief executive. Is it worth charging a pound, because presumably it's free at the moment, I don't know what the overnight rate is, and say, yeah, you're welcome to come, but you will be supervised, and if you are doing the things that are being complained about, the noise, the popping and banging, councillor Hogg, as you're talking about, or wheel spins or whatever, then they would be asked to leave. And if we have some enforcement officers there with the powers to do so, it might be sensible. Unless anybody's got any final points, go on, councillor.
I just wanted to just come back to you on that. The problem is that the car park concerned is huge, as you well know.
I know.
And you're basically faced with upwards of 500 cars. One of the reasons why the police, certainly at Stapleton Road where you can get maybe 200 cars there, one of the problems is it is out of control, as in there are too many people there for them to be able to safely police that situation without a major operation happening. And I would be mindful of the fact of putting council officers into that kind of situation. It needs to be very well thought through to be able to organise these events. If we were to close down, and as you rightly say, that there is that danger of kind of like a dandelion effect, that you kind of blow it and it just goes to the four winds, and we could have pockets of, but then they would at least be a lot more manageable. And more importantly, Peterborough is now seen as being an easy place to do this kind of activity, specifically the drifting. So, people will get in their cars and they will drive from Norfolk, from Lincolnshire, from Hertfordshire, from Essex, to come to these meets because they know that there is a good chance of being able to just conduct their activity without any kind of robust, whereas if they thought that there was going to be the chance that the meet was going to be broken up, maybe they wouldn't, maybe they would stay more locally and deal with the issues that they have with maybe slightly more robust approach with the police in their own locale. So, I think that we do need to, we need to find somebody to crack this open, and then we need to have a long-term solution for keeping a lid on it, is the bottom line.
There are many ways. My basic point is supervision, whether or not that's the police, whether it's council officers or whether it's security. For example, Peterborough United employ police, we could do the same if it was being paid for. Just saying. So, there are many options to look at in terms of, the basic point is supervision. If it's not supervised, people will do what they want. But if we try and disperse it, it'll just go somewhere else, and the problem will appear either in part or in whole somewhere else. Just some more thought for officers, really, because we are not, you know, we're not going there with our SIA badges on. Okay, thank you. I'll take all the recommendations as read, one to 10, unless anybody has any objection to that.
One further point to make. So, I'd like to thank councillor Stevenson for her hard work of chairing this task and finish group, and I know that as an independent member, she's no longer eligible to go on a task and finish group, but I have to say that her experience and depth of knowledge on this subject is far and above better than anybody else on the group.
I'll stop you, because I have no problem with political proportionality not being applied to task and finish groups.
So, I would like to see if that.
So, if councillor Stevenson wants to join it, I don't have any problem, and I can't see anybody else would. So, as far as I'm concerned, there isn't, political proportionality should not apply in all circumstances to task and finish groups. So, from my point of view, there's no reason why she can't stay on it.
Thank you very much.
If she's listening, by the way. So, we try to have an all-inclusive councillor here because we are very nice people, are we not? Right. I expected a unanimous yes from my colleagues, not, mm, let's think about that for a moment. Okay, so as I said, Pippa, items one to 10 will take unanimously as read from Cabinet. I don't see any dissension to that. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you councillor Hogg and Ian for your presentation this morning. So, while we just reset, if people want to move around for a second. Hopefully, people can see, just the next set of officers in place, so we all know who they are. We shall move on to item number six this morning. The Towns Fund Business Cases are set out on pages 35 to 72. So, the Towns Fund report is submitted to Cabinet this morning to request the delegation of authority to the to cabinet this morning to request the delegation of authority to the monitoring officer, director of resources and the section one five one officer, and the executive director of Placent Economy to approve the Towns Deal summary documents and submit them to the department for levelling up housing and communities for approval in line with our agreed Towns Fund programme. The Towns Deal Board have endorsed the submission that we met just last week of these documents to Deluc. And that was on the sixteenth of June and confirmed this again. There are three projects that are before us today, representing an ask of six million pounds worth of funding of the total twenty two point nine million pounds requested from Deluc for Peterborough. Each of the three projects has had business cases completed and praised by officers. The summary documents and monitoring evaluation reports are appended to the cabinet report for our attention this morning as this falls within my portfolio remit, hence the short introduction summary from me. But Karen and Charlotte Palmer will pick up the reins from here. I don't know if you want to add any more comments by way of background or introduction. Karen, do you want to kick off? You might need to pull that towards you, by the way. Ladies and gents, that, because the, the speakers aren't very loud. If our tech team are listening at the back there, they're not very loud in the room. So unless you've got the microphone here, people will struggle to hear you. So normally about six inches away. Okay?
No, that was really helpful.
It's just my techie talk, sorry. It's my background. But anyway, fire away.
And these are new to me, so thank you. No, that was a great introduction, introduction. Thank you. I think we have some slides. If it's possible to share those to give some sort of flavour.
I don't know who's sharing them.
Okay, no problem.
Unless they've got them over there, no, is the answer.
Right, okay.
But are they, these, are, are there these ones here with the?
They're very similar.
Very similar. Okay. I don't, members would have had them in their packs though. So if they've all got their devices, they'll know what you're talking about. And if they haven't, they will get lines and stay behind after class after today's cabinet meeting.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. So thank you for the introduction. So just as a reminder, the Towns Fund programme is an ask to government for the twenty two point nine million for a suite of eight projects. So across the whole programme of those eight projects, four have already been submitted to government. We had two which were submitted, which will receive funding for in twenty twenty one, and two which were submitted to government in April this year, which were pending approval on. So this is the next three projects we're putting forward. We'd like to share a summary with you today and put these forward to Deluc in July to apply for the funding. And the final one will go in the autumn. So all of these should go through the system in twenty twenty two. So the three projects today are the pedestrian bridge, which is an ask for two million pounds, some improvements to Lincoln Road Public Realm, which is two point five million, and some accessibility improvements to Peterborough Station Quarter for one point five million. So a total of a six million pound ask. So in terms of the bridge, if you're a cyclist or a pedestrian going for the north of the south of the city, crossing over the Neen River, from a town centre perspective, your current offering is to walk across Town Bridge, which as we know is quite a busy bridge. So from a cyclist or pedestrian perspective, we would like to offer a new pedestrian bridge, which will be located and link the two areas between Peterborough Embankment and Flaton Keys. So on the Embankment side, we'd have a link between the New University area, the key, the Lido, access to a lot of the employment areas across to the Flaton Keys area. So it would be a lot safer from a walking cycling perspective rather than going across the road. It would have access for all. So there'd be ramps on there as well, and it'd be an improved environment. The actual design of the bridge, which we've looked at, is a cable stay design. So it's quite an iconic design with a very high height. So you'd be able to see it is quite a statement feature which people will be able to access across from north to south in the city. So that funding request, as I say, is for the two million? Am I losing my, yeah, two million? The total funding for the bridge, which is designed just to outline business case stage at this moment, is six point two million. The balance of that funding would come from section one oh six SIL and some funding from the CPCA. So that's the first project I'd just like to give you a brief update on. The second one is some public realm improvements to Lincoln Road. The improvements we're looking at are between Sergeant Street and Windmill Street. So that stretch of road has a huge amount of the businesses on it. At the moment, if we think of the landscape there, we've got uneven pavements, we've got quite an absence of green space, we've got littering problems, we've got a couple of parking issues. What we're looking to do is improve that public realm area to make it safer and improve a lot of the, the paving. So I would have liked to have shared a nice image of this with you today. But if you can just sort of visualise, looking down that stretch of area, we're looking at potentially looking at four sections of planting. So as you walk or cycle, you're in that area, you have a lot more greenery around you, taking away and improving the pathways there with block paving, going from the roads to the shop printages. So it'd look a lot smarter. General public realm improvements, like more bins, street furniture, two pedestrian crossings from the Lincoln Road Almero junction. So it's a lot safer. We're also looking at two potential options around cycling, either having cycle lanes in or not having cycle lanes in, and a community art installation project. All of these are at the design stage at the moment. So please take them with a hint of caution. And all of these will be taken to public consultation following your, if you're happy with this. And we'll be looking to do that public consultation in July. So just as a reminder, that request into Deluc will be for funding for two point five million. The whole scheme is just shy of three point four million. And the balance of that funding would come from highways capital, SIL and some smaller shared prosperity bids. So the third and final project, just to talk you through, is focused around Peterborough Station Quarter. So at the moment, there's no accessible and level pedestrian cycle links between the city and the, the train station. So we're looking to put in a number of sort of small interventions to improve that. So one of the simple examples, if you go around the back of the Yellow Car Park, if that's familiar to you, if you're going towards the Great Northern Hotel, if you're cycling around that area, there's quite a few nip points as you're cycling around there, we're looking to improve that. If you're going down Bright Street, if you picture yourself on a bike or on foot going down Bright Street towards the brewery tap in front of you, so the brewery taps on the right hand side, you would usually have to follow the road round to the right, go around the back of the brewery tap. We're looking at some interventions down there to improve the cycle access. So it's safer and it's more direct into the station. So it's general improvements in the public realm. One of the, the bigger interventions we'd be looking at is making sure we've got a better access into the shopping centre as well and link into the town. So at the moment, it's just stepped access, which leads from Bougie's Boulevard up into the shopping centre. We're looking at putting a large ramp in there so there'd be accessible, you know, accessible on foot and disabled access as well. So the ask from Deluc for that would be for a one point five million pounds Towns Fund allocation and any additional funds from local growth match funding. So that's the three projects we'd like to ask for your support on, see if you're happy for us to proceed with that application to Deluc. If there's any questions or anything I can add to that, please let me know. Thank you.
Thanks. I hope you brought sandwiches because there's lots of questions on, on each of those sections. So let's kick off with the first one, which I have is the, the pedestrian bridge. Two or three questions on that kickoff straight away. I'll take John Howard, councillor Allen and John Howard again, I think. Unless, John, you want to ask both your questions together. Is that okay?
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, I'm going to blend some of my questions into one to make it a bit easier for you. It was just to get a scale of the size of it and what the length and width of the bridge is going to be. And obviously, once it's in place, will there still be room for people to sort of come to the side of the bridge and enjoy the view? Thank you.
Thank you for that. So the current bridge design we're looking at has a span of a hundred and one metres. So the river at that point is sixty seven metres. It's all been designed in line with the, is it LTN one twenty?
Yes.
Which is the cyclist's.
Active travel.
Active travel. Thank you very much. So it's actually, at the moment, it's just over four metres wide. So there should be sufficient space for people who are travelling both directions. And of course, what I didn't mention earlier, you've just picked up on the views from that bridge as well. So from that bridge, you can look back onto the city and see the heights of the cathedral. Thank you.
Councillor Allen, please.
Yes, thank you, Leader. Pop reference. I know money's too tight to mention, but we do want to get this right. It's an iconic bridge that we're going to put in that generations in the future will appreciate. And so that's my point about getting it right. The link from the foot of the bridge, I've seen visualisations, but are we going to splay it out so that it does cater for the university and indeed into the city? So that's an obvious route from the city over to Flaton Keys and indeed traffic foot and cycle from the university will go to Flaton Keys. And my follow up to that is, will there be a delineation between pedestrian and cycle facilities? Because I know that's a trend now happening with footpaths that rather than let them all bum around and beat each other up, particularly with scooters as well now in play, are we going to delineate the bridge so that one side is for cyclists and one side is for pedestrians? Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll jump in and answer those if that's okay. And so first of all, in terms of how the pedestrian footbridge connects into either existing or new infrastructure, both on the Embankment and the Flaton Keys side, all of that will come out as part of the detailed design stage. At this point in time, we don't have the specification for exactly how that will look on the Embankment side. And the, that will be subject to the wider Embankment master plan works that are evolving and developing, but also subject to additional funding requirements in order to put that longer term connectivity in place. However, we do have, we will subject to the approval of cabinet and Deluc. We will enter into a period of detailed design now where those sorts of details will start to emerge. And we can look at how that will materialise and what existing funding streams and potential future funding streams and developer contributions could be secured for that. And in terms of actually using the footbridge itself, in terms of the guidance, again, referring back to LTM one twenty, we will ensure the bridge is designed to meet that guidance. So we'll, as part of the detailed design, we'll be reviewing the best options in terms of shared space and making sure that that's designed and fulfils that criteria. And again, that will emerge and all be part of the public consultation process for the structure.
Thank you. Anybody else on that particular project? Nope, I don't think so. Okay. Well, should move on to the next one then, which I believe is the Lincoln Road proposal. And again, I've got several questions in about that. We'll start with Marco, please.
I'm sorry, Leader. I didn't know, didn't hear what you said, but.
I said, I believe you have a question. According to my little sheet, it's definitely you, your number one.
Not necessarily on any specific item.
You can ask whatever question. You know, this is a free and open cabinet.
It's just that I am in a way, a little bit disappointed that one of the projects doesn't include the mid gate, west gate pedestrianisation and improvement. And, you know, I would like to know where we are with that, if we are anywhere with that. And, and we, do you have intentions, if we're not anywhere with it, do you have intentions to put it in as the next phase or something like that?
Yeah, so I can update on that one. As part of the annual budget setting process for the combined authority, we did submit a number of bids for funding for their next phase of investment, of which west gate and mid gate improvements were one of them. And that, that was quite a high level overview at that point, mostly focusing on improving the public realm and traffic flows in that area. Unfortunately, that bid wasn't prioritised for the combined authority as part of the current budget setting process. And it doesn't necessarily mean it's off the table in the medium to longer term, but it does mean we need to do further work with them to identify the viability of that scheme. And that said, there are other funding sources that will become available to us over time. For example, the government, as you'll be aware, is increasingly funding in active travel schemes. And there may be ways to, again, look at opportunities to improve active travel connections, which by default will have an improvement to the public realm space as well. But at this point in time, that wasn't a scheme that the combined authority could fund. And unfortunately, it wasn't a scheme that was put forward at the time of the investment plan for the Towns Fund.
Lynette, please.
Thank you. And you did mention we're going to have public consultations. Can I ask whether, I mean, they're both, they're all three quite substantial schemes and mean a lot to the various people that are engaged in them. So I just wondered, are they all going to take place at the same time in the same, same area or different times and in different places? Can you explain to us how the public will get to know and be able to comment on it, including me, by the way? Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good question. So for the Lincoln Road, what we'd like to do is start the public consultation in July. That will involve online communications. It will involve face to face, which will be happening on Lincoln Road. We're looking at having a base there at different times of day as well to make sure we're capturing different parts of the community or working at different times of the day. And of course, the ability to ask questions via email and send those questions in. The public consultation for the bridge is due to take place in the autumn. I believe that's the second one which is intended to take place. And that will be a very sort of similar approach in terms of the different ways and different mediums which the public and officers and yourselves will be able to find out details about what those proposals are and the bits which, you know, we can certainly pull into any sort of next steps of any design. And the Peterborough Station Quarter will be after that. So they won't be at the same time, if that's your question.
And in relation to the last two, I think you mentioned that you're going to have a place down in Lincoln Road. Are you going to have a place near the university or somewhere like that? And another, and a place where people can actually go to for the station quarter?
I'll jump in for that. So you, I have to say, you're one step ahead of us with the details for the consultation on Lincoln Road. I'm sorry, on the, on the River Neen pedestrian bridge and for the station quarters specifically, when it comes into terms of the locations that we'll have, because it's very key to us, of course, that we're in places that are relevant to the majority of people that will go on to use those facilities. So we've got an overall plan for those two schemes, but the detail in terms of actual location hasn't yet been finalised.
But we're going to have one.
But we will definitely have something in place. And in terms of Lincoln Road as well, just to add a little bit more detail to the consultation there, because I went through with officers all of the plans for that on Friday, and we have some great visualisations now of what that scheme could look like. And we're also going to be doing some work with the ward councillors and hoping the ward councillors will support us in attending those events. And the consultation questions and literature will be produced in the five most commonly spoken languages in that area of the city in order to ensure we can really interact with as many people as possible. Again, if, if anyone else has any suggestions or ideas for ways we could build on that consultation, we're more than happy, obviously, to incorporate that. But Lincoln Road will go first and it will run for about a month, effectively.
Thank you.
I have two more questions on this, one from John Howard and one from councillor Hussein. But John first and then councillor Hussein.
Thank you, Leader.
Nigel as well.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's really good to see an ambitious project for Lincoln Road. So well done for getting that in, in the proposals. I was just wondering, what if the feedback on the public consultation comes back and doesn't favour the cycle lanes? Thank you.
At this stage of the scheme, as you'd expect, we're very much in that, the process of having different options available for people to consider. And we're very keen to make sure that we're not presenting a fait accompli to, to people in the local community because we're very obviously interested as an authority to understand the views, but particularly the views of users of that infrastructure in the city. And so as, as is standard process, we'll receive all of the comments back as part of the consultation process and we will review those. And then after that, we'll move to a detailed design stage, which will favour one or other option. Effectively, what the council will need to do is consider the, the advantages and disadvantages of either, either scheme and work out which one is happy to progress with. It could be that there's an opportunity to incorporate elements of both, albeit the cycle lanes themselves. It would be, it would be quite difficult to do then with the road width that we have in any other way that's different to how they've been outlined at the moment. And one of the things we are also conscious of as well is that we are at the outline design stage for these schemes at the moment. And once we have a selected preferred option, we do need to take that through the standard road safety process that we do as part of any highway changes. And what we might find when we do that is some of the options need, need revising again in order to be able to meet the road safety requirements. So this is, in summary, this is an iterative process. And if we get to a point where we're looking at a design that differs substantially from the favoured design, of course, we'll enter into further consultation with residents and businesses as well. and businesses as well.
Councillor Hussein, please.
Thank you. With the bus depot that's on Lincoln Road, it does cause a lot of issues. So going forward, there is talks of potential moves in the future. So will the plan incorporate a design that would be adaptable if there's a move of the bus station and the bus depot in the future? And also, certain parts of that road have shops encroaching into the sort of public space. Does this design take that into account and, you know, target those shops moving back out the public sphere?
Yeah, so if I take those questions in turn, firstly, the Stagecoach Bus Depot. We are aware that that is a challenging infrastructure for this area of the city. And members will recall some time ago now, a motion was passed at full council to commit to looking at alternative locations for that bus depot. As part of the work undertaken on that, we have been working with the Combined Authority and as part of their budget setting process have secured some revenue funding in order to undertake a feasibility assessment of the various different options for relocating that facility. And that is from not just in terms of where it might be suitable in the city for that facility to be located, but also what the finance model is that would sit behind that. You'll all be aware, the Combined Authority have the passenger transport powers now that previously sat with the local authority. They were also therefore considering the option of franchising the local bus network or aspects of it. So in order to relocate a depot, it's necessary to look at the different models in terms of ownership of a facility. And does that make sense in the medium to longer term for that to be owned by a single operator? Or owned, for example, by the Combined Authority and be part of a contracted franchise as infrastructure for a local network to be provided from? So the long and short of it is that work has been undertaken now to look at what those options look like, with a preferred option to come forward, which would then look at what those different financing models are and how that, how the relevant stakeholders would invest in order to achieve that. In terms of the highway improvements right now in Lincoln Road, we're very conscious that that infrastructure could change. But any development that was to come forward on that site in the future would be required to have consequential improvements to the, the public realm, effectively for where that their land finishes and where it meets the current highway. So there would be requirements in place for the new developer of that site to be able to make sure that infrastructure ties in. So yeah, we're very much looking at making sure they, we don't do one thing and then have to change it completely in the not too distant future. And in terms of shop frontages, so you'll all be aware, one of the challenges in this particular area of the city is that many of the individual shop units own the, what effectively feels like the pavement outside of the front of the shop. Now, historically, it probably wouldn't have been pavement, it probably could have been front gardens, private property, but it's now all opened up and people will use it as they would use a path. People can have their, their goods and their produce out and available for sale. In an ideal world, the council would just go in and put this intervention through on the highway that it owns. But of course, that would leave a very patchwork effect around the area with poor quality infrastructure. So our proposal as part of this scheme is to work with each of the individual property owners and undertake those improvement works on their behalf, subject to the legal requirements being in place. And then those shop owners continue to take on the long term maintenance of that facility. It does mean they can continue to have their goods, their produce, their tables and chairs, et cetera, out on that space. But that is all considered to be an important element of that area of the community to encourage people to dwell longer, encourage people to therefore to, the effect would be people sitting and being calmer in that space would have a consequential impact on the movement of vehicular traffic as well.
Thanks. The bus depot and electrification of buses is very much on my agenda and is actually in the paperwork for the leader's strategy meeting that's coming up on Wednesday for discussion. So it is moving along. Our final question is from Nigel Simons.
Yeah, thank you, leader. Yeah, we'll see we have a provision of two EV charging points. Can we be a bit more ambitious on that?
We can certainly endeavour to be more ambitious. Of course, we are working within a funding envelope here. So what we need to ensure is that we're not exceeding the funding envelope available to us. One thing that we can and will very much bear in mind as part of this is looking at the underground connectivity for EV charging. The ideal scenario being that we enable further infrastructure to be installed later because the underground works are in place. That will depend obviously on the location of the current utilities, because even that could have excessive costs as part of that work, but that's certainly something we'll be looking to do.
Okay, I don't think I missed anybody out there. It's going to take a great deal of cooperation from property owners to actually get agreement on all those properties to go right up to the boundaries. So I wish you well with that and we'll see how that comes out. Finally, just a few questions on the other project, which is the station quarter. And I believe councillor Oliver Sainsbury is first out the traps on this one.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask on the station quarter, what the access improvement will mean for commuters actually going to and from the station and then the local residents who live nearby? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. So there's, there are sort of lots of small interventions we're looking at there. And you sort of said specifically for the residents of the area. So just thinking out loud, thinking sort of north of Bright Street, that area there. So looking at those potential cycle improvements, which will put down Bright Street, which will be able to link people from, from the areas where they live, past the brewery tap across to, I keep using that brewery tap as a reference point, but it's quite a big, big thing there, just down towards the station. Also, the better links with the better access from the bus station as well, with the improvement of the ramps, which we already have in place. So they'll be on a more steady incline, so sort of safer and, you know, better for people in wheelchairs, cyclists and anyone sort of with pushchairs or anything like that. So, and it's the realignment and improving those crossings and also looking at better signage around the area as well to link people from the city and the areas where they live to and from the railway station. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Councillor Chastey, please.
Hello again. How does this project link into the larger Peterborough Station Quarter project?
So as some members will be aware, we are proposing to submit a levelling up round two funding bid to government on the sixth of July, subject to approval from the Combined Authority Board shortly. That wider bid is for a package of work totalling around £50 million, which is improvements to the station itself and the passenger facilities, introducing a new western access and improving the new, improving the current access from the eastern side of the station amongst, amongst much more, many more elements. This particular element of the station quarter work is looking at improvements that will effectively be no regret improvements. So regardless of the finer detail of how those various elements of the station quarter come forward for the £50 million levelling up bid and ultimately, a couple of hundred million pounds worth of regeneration in that area, these, these recommendations contained within this, this outline business case here are improvements that will improve people's day to day lives now, walking to and from the station, cycling to and from the station, making sure that journey is easier for them and more achievable to do on a day to day basis and more accessible for all users regardless of their physical ability. So these measures are designed to be complementary of that, that longer term work.
And just something that you said earlier on about moving the bus depot. Have you ever thought about putting it in Fairmeadow? I mean, that would solve two problems with one, you know, one blow, one stone, one arrow, whatever way you want to look at it.
I, I, can I be blunt? I've thought of a lot of places the bus depot could go, to be honest, and a lot of them have different advantages for different reasons. So for example, one of the locations we originally looked at would be sort of the town centre end of Maskew Avenue. Because if we could locate there, we'd be obviously on very good highway infrastructure on Borges Boulevard. But there was also the work that's been undertaken on the PIRI, the Peterborough Renewable Energy Infrastructure Project. And that was why effectively the scope of that project goes as far as Maskew Avenue. Because if, if we could get our own electricity up to a new bus depot location and then we could power our own fleet, I mean, obviously, that just ticks so many boxes for everyone. That has advantages of obviously not needing to cross the river and the rail as well. But there's, there's also opportunities around, potentially in the Fenge area, around Pleasure Fairmeadow and also in North Breton as well. This will become a task for us effectively when we identify the, the financial model behind the relocation. It will then compare to what opportunities of land are available at that point in time, either on the open market or assets that we have that we could utilise differently ourselves.
Great. I think I got everybody there on that. Can't see any more questions, looking around? No? Okay. I think that very exciting times ahead with all this development going on. We are definitely open for business. So I'll refer you to the recommendations on page 35. If we're all agreed, it is only the opening statement and one thing to approve. So if we're all happy with that? Agreed, there we go. That, that was easy, thank you very much. Even though there are a lot of questions, it's three great projects there. So we'll move on to item seven. This is councillor Howard's portfolio. I don't know if you've got anything by way of introduction councillor Howard, but I noticed we've got Charlotte Black here and is Tony here as well? Ah, there we go. Hiding down the back over there, just give a moment to reset the room. It's like, it's like having a dance card, isn't it? When you're at a ball, you're just kind of stepping up. Not that I remember those things, but apparently you used to have lots of dances in the town. All councillor airs will remember, she's had two weddings here. What? Indeed. Across the road, the angel, yes. Long gone. Okay, so it is the extension of the learning disability day opportunity contract in Peterborough. You'll find the information before us this morning on pages 73 to 78. Councillor Howard, have you got anything by way of introduction?
Thank you, leader. Yeah, Oliver's going to take the lead on the presentation today, but just to give a bit of sense of the positive impact that this decision will, will have, I'll draw you to example 4.1 of a 21 year old woman with learning disabilities, who through the, through the provision is training up to actually look to apply for a job, which is making a massive difference in her life. So just to quantify some of the impact that this decision is making. But I'll hand over to Oliver for the main presentation.
Sorry, Tony's going to take us through this, I'll just support with questions.
Hi, this is Tony here. So we're requesting today if we can get Cabinet approval to extend the contracts, the provision of three day opportunities until the end of March 2024. And that will be for the providers Thera, East Anglia, SENSE, which is the National Deaf Blind and Rebellous Association and the Helping Hands Group. This will ensure the continuation of day opportunity contracts and services whilst we undertake a wider commissioning exercise, looking at day opportunities, reviewing both Peterborough and Cambridgeshire. So we're requesting that we are extending the contracts to the 31st of March 2024.
Thank you. I know I have two questions, I have no idea what the questions are. Councillor Hussein and councillor Lynette. So Lyn, you've been closest.
Thank you very much.
And beginning with A.
Beginning with A, it's always good. I think this is really, really important for these people who, who obviously need all of this work that is going on. It's a very interesting thing that you're, you're doing here to extend this contract. And yet I see it makes an alternative offer to the City College as well. So in other words, we're not just faced with one area for people. But what I wanted to ask was about the sort of co-production aspect of this and whether that features within the day opportunities translation and how the Learning Disability Partnership Board will feature in that as well. So if you can give me...
Yeah, that, that has already started as part of that programme as well. So co-production is the involvement, engagement of wider stakeholders, particularly families, service users, people who access the services as well, so they can feed into the design and the delivery of these services to make them really meaningful, so that their outcomes are going to be the best for them. There's, to date, my understanding that, you know, they've been engaging with key stakeholders from the very beginning. So you kind of start with a blank sheet, so you can really develop that service as you go along and take people's views. So I'm understanding that they've already been co-designing and piloting an approach around outcome based commissioning. So that's very much based on the, the benefits to the individual and what they will receive from that service as well. So day opportunities will also support families and carers, they will have a break from their caring opportunities. But also, it's the meaning and the intent from what those people are actually going into here as well. So there's been co-production on that, there's been a lot of work going around visiting the services, speaking to people, looking at what they want to design going forward in the future. And I understand it's more of a community based care and support model as well. So it's using the strength of what's already out there within the communities and building on that to support people. So it's a real key feature of what we do.
Councillor Hussein, please.
Thank you. I've got two parts to my question. This is a high value contract and it would be good to understand the value for money. So how does the service compare to City College in terms of number of people accessing the service and the cost of the service? And you've given a cost breakdown in the paper. Can you confirm if this is inclusive of inflation? If not, what is the plan to manage that?
Okay. So yeah, just starting with the, the numbers of people who access the services here and bearing in mind like with SENSE and Thera and that we've got extremely complex individuals, so about deaf blind people, for example, so some of the most vulnerable people with the most complex needs. So these are very intensive services. We've, I think from last year, from what I can tell, we had about 86 people across those three services. So a bit of a breakdown, we had about 22 at SENSE and they go to the City College, they can go from anywhere between one and five days per week. People often go on, on regular days. We've had about 40 people at Helping Hands, we've had in their twenties, around 24 at Thera. So a good number of service users for whom it is kind of a lifeline for them and their families. At the City College, which perhaps some of their supporters are of a slightly different level and different varieties, because we've got different centres like employment hubs, we've got the Brook Street College, we've got an industrial hub in Hampton, we've actually got about 250 people using that. So we can actually see the numbers of people across Peterborough who are going into the, and the variety and the range of support that we can give them across these different provisions is really important. Sorry, and also the second part of it was about the, the value for money, was that right, about inflation? Yeah, I think we'll get this to Oliver.
Yeah, thank you. So just, if I could just skip back to the, the value for money element. So there's a number of service users that are accessing and compared to City College, which is an in-house service that's provided by the council, as opposed to the three providers that act on the, the framework contract that we've just set out there. This contract that we're looking to extend is just slightly over 1.2 million a year as opposed to the City College contract, which is just over 1.7 million pounds a year. Now, there is a significant difference in the number of people that are accessing those services, so over 250 for City College and under 100 for these framework providers. Now, there is a very, very clear difference in the needs that have been identified in the care and support plans for the people that access the providers that we're talking about today, as Tony has referred to. So it's, it's not a comparison of, of like for like, but we can assure from the, the quality of services that we've, that we review and the outcomes based on annual reviews that the individuals who are accessing those services have, the outcomes that they're receiving are, are very good for the, for the services that they're accessing. So we're very confident actually, we are receiving good value for money as a local authority on these services. The second part, so in short, inflation is not applied to the, to this request. So to go for the lifetime of the contract, we're not looking to apply inflation. We would do that on a year by year basis and we would do that as part of our business planning process within the council. So that's something we're looking at now for 23, 24 and onwards. But this is a, this is not a, a figure that includes inflation. And the principle for that is inflation is varying so much at the moment. We know that recently in the, the May figure, the Office of Budget Responsibility has set, has set the inflation figure for next year. So we just need to, to refine that work within adult social care to understand what that means for us and the respective contracts.
Thank you very much. I think that was the only questions I have noted on this item. So we will move to the recommendation, which is page 73, you'll find them on, which is to approve the agreements for the provision of day opportunities to be extended until 31st of March 2024 for the providers as listed, the amount listed also. We all agreed on that? Agreed, lovely, thanks. And just for my Cabinet, we've got 20 odd minutes or so before we're due to finish. So questions is fine, but if we can keep them short, that would be appreciated, so we can move on to our next meeting. We'll move on then to item eight, which is Lion's Gardens extension to the 31st of the 10th, 23. And I believe that, again, this is John Howard and indeed, no change in the front line up also. So John, do you have any intro to this either?
Thank you, leader. I'll head straight over to Tony on this.
Okay, so we're requesting the contract with Herwood Care Services for Lion's Gardens, which is an adults with learning disability and autism residential service, which is based in Glinton near Peterborough. And we are requesting an extension to this from the first of May twenty two to the thirty first of October twenty three. We're undertaking a wide ranging review of respite provisions, including residential respite in Peterborough and Cambridgeshire, and this will ensure that we align the outcomes from that review. And I've got the best models that we would put in place as of the first of November twenty twenty three. And the annual contract value is seven hundred and eighty seven thousand one hundred and twenty five pounds. Fifty percent of this is funded by the CCG, which is a longstanding arrangement, and we have got confirmation of that for the extension period. And for the eighteen month extension, that's one point one eight million pounds. So we are requesting that cabinet agree to the extension.
Thanks, Tony. Questions? I've got a number of people, Oliver, Nigel, Jackie and Marco, if you want to... Oh, your question's already been answered, that's good, glad to check. So it's Oliver, Nigel and Jackie, I believe, in that order. Well, Jackie doesn't need one either, her question's been answered, good. So Oliver and Nigel.
Thank you. So co-producing services and engaging with the market is obviously important to ensure that we are, to ensure the services that the council commissions are meeting service users' needs. Can you share with us how this will feature in the respite review work?
Yeah, thank you for your question. We have already begun this area of work from the beginning of the review, so we ensure that co-production, engagement with all stakeholders, including service users and their families, are built into the work. So as we were at the data gathering stage, which has been taking place over the last six months, we've been also liaising with those communities. So we've been visiting providers and we've been speaking to staff that are there, we've been speaking to the people who use those services with different sort of communication means, asking them what a good day looks like for them, what they hope to get out of the provision there. We've also undertaken, it's still open, we're about to close it, a survey which has been put out online, been advertised by through social media, through our engagement partners, through our operational teams. And we've had a good level of response to that survey, which looked at residential respite, but also at the wider respite as well, so we can feed in to the other kinds of services that would support with this. We've also been meeting and holding workshops with our contracted engagement providers, so that's Pinpoint and Family Voice, to ensure that we have the voice of parents and carers representing younger people coming through. We've also been working with Voiceability and Enabling Independence. And Enabling Independence is our Peterborough engagement partner, and that represents our communities and people who use services. So we've been asking them and starting from the very beginning what works, what's important to them in terms of the contracts and the services. And as we move into the next stage of options, appraisals and developing from the findings of our engagement so far and of our analysis, we'll also be very inclusive of them going through that, making sure their voice is heard and they will be able to tailor services that best meet their needs.
Thank you. Nigel, please.
Yeah, thank you. You've referenced the service is good quality, can you qualify that, please?
Okay, yeah, so we have a contracts team and they would be flagging if there was any concerns around the quality of providers. They're not considered to be a provider of concern, but they do hold regular contract monitoring meetings, so look at elements that may contribute to quality or may impact on that. Obviously, under Covid, everyone's been struggling with their staffing and this service is no different, but they're coming back more on an even keel at the moment. They've still been able to deliver consistent and good quality services throughout Covid, including planned and unplanned respite, where people have been hitting a bit of a brick wall sometimes in terms of mental health and services. As other services weren't there, they've had to pick up the slack, so the quality's very good there as well. In terms of the CQC inspection, their main ratings inspection was October twenty seventeen and they were good in all areas. So they're safe, they're well led, they're responsive, they're caring, and all those people there in that service will get a good service. And also, we've had responsive inspections of a lot of care services in response to Covid. So in January this year, they also had a visit around infection control processes and procedures. They were looking at how the service was delivered, but also for visitors coming in. And we had assurance on those areas that they were fine and strong. There was a qualified assurance in terms of the staffing, because they've had staffing issues and obviously has impacted on the service. But all in all, we don't have any concerns about them as a provider, so that they're good.
Thank you very much, Tony. So with no further questions, I think we'll move to the recommendation, which you'll find on pages seventy nine to eighty four. And there are two recommendations, one and two, and we'll take those as read unless anybody has any objection. Do I all agree? Thank you very much, folks. Moving swiftly on to item nine, which is the AE twelve sixty Neen Parkway Junction Three Improvement Scheme, Design of Active Travel Schemes. I was expecting to see Charlotte there, oh, but Lewis is here, so I'm deputising. I was going to say, you look very much like Charlotte from a distance, particularly with the beard.
I won't tell her that.
It's just my eyesight, Lewis, don't worry. Okay, so Lewis Banks will be introducing this, I don't know if Adrian wants to say anything either, or indeed Marco, Chelestead, you want to say anything by way of introduction? Okay, that's all right, that's fine. So Lewis, if you want to just, as brief as you can, tell us what this is about, because I think we, most members will be fully up to date with this.
Yeah, sure. Morning, everyone. So we've previously received funding from the Combined Authority to design an improvement scheme at Junction Three, which is the grade separated roundabout at the junction of Neen Parkway and Fletton Parkway, which obviously improved congestion at a busy junction. As part of the scheme, we want to make some walking and cycling improvements, so have been successful in securing an additional one hundred and sixty five K to design two active travel schemes. So they are a new footway on Melbourne Way and a new cycleway on Fort Pris Close and Fort Pris Way that will connect the existing cycleways in Hampton with the existing cycleways in Signet Business Park, which goes all the way to town. So the intention is that we'll be submitting a full business case and detailed design to the Combined Authority later this year to hopefully secure construction funding for the entire scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the second set of money really to be spent in that area with the junction widening as well, which is what I was getting confused with earlier. Okay, so I think Marco and Lynne have a question. Oh, no, Lynne doesn't have a question anymore, so Marco does.
Just very quickly, in the report that I got and the briefing, somebody mentioned Serpentine Green? What's happening at Serpentine Green Roundabout? Anything, or is that something different we're doing?
So that will be something different, the Serpentine Roundabout. It's actually, well, there's a couple of roundabouts there referred to as the Serpentine Roundabout. We've got some early options, I think, for what people generally refer to as the McDonald's Roundabout there, looking at options there to improve congestion there. This, the main roundabout works, so is Junction Three, so it's where the Serpentine meets the Fletton Parkway and the Neen Parkway. So that's where the major, the future major scheme will be at that location, yeah.
Okay, and can I ask one other question whilst you're looking at Junction Roundabout Three, whatever you want to call it? Do you realise that one of the biggest problems is getting out of Thorpe Road at peak times and slightly widening the splay at the entrance of Thorpe Road where it meets...
Yeah, is it the A forty seven there?
Yeah. Whatever it is, if that was just to be widened, you know, even half a dozen feet, that would enable two cars, one to go right and one to go left. And that doesn't happen at the moment.
Yeah, so actually onsite at the moment, looking at that, that's Junction Fifteen Roundabout, and I believe there is intention to widen, they can't go too far back because there's utilities, but to widen, yeah, that section of Thorpe Road there, just as you enter the roundabout.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I think that was it, nobody else had anything on that. So we shall approve the recommendations on page eighty five. There's only one recommendation, we're all happy. Agreed with that, lovely, thank you. Item number ten, hopefully this will be a short item, which is the Agreement to Terminate the Council's Agreement with NPS Peterborough Limited in relation to property and estate as detailed in pages eighty nine to one oh two. This is councillor Coles, but he's on holiday right now, much deserved, no doubt. So Cecilia Booth is here as the Section one five one officer and responsible also for finance. Do you have any comments to make on this item, or we're just going to move on?
Just very briefly. MPS have been notified of our intention to give notice and I've been up to see the team as well, so we're looking for an amicable exit of this contract.
Thank you very much. Well, the recommendation, folks, before us is on page ninety seven, and it's three items. So again, without reading them through, you should have all read them, you've got the papers in front of you. I think that obviously the time has come to reflect and do things in a different way, which is what basically this sets us on a path to do. So we all agreed with those recommendations? Agreed, that's, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Opportunity Peterborough, which is on pages one oh three to one oh six. I think I do have some notes myself on this, just bear with me a second. This comes under my portfolio, but I think, again, as we've been looking at all our relationships with different entities and businesses that we either control, have a share in, we are now revising and also, in actual fact, I view this as a very positive step in order to reinforce the council's commitment to regeneration and inward investment. And I know that Tom Hennessy, who heads up OP, has been doing a great deal of work and we would look to be keeping him and other members of staff that are currently working in OP if we reintegrate, that's the word, our economic function back into the council. Adrian Chapman, do you want to say anything on this?
If I may, leader, I'll be brief. Just want to echo exactly the point you made there. We've heard today of some really positive developments in the city, Towns Fund, highways improvements and so on, but there is so much more to do. And I see the proposal that's before you today as a really important step forward in making it clear to developers and investors that the council is open for business. And if the proposal is agreed, that function of economic development and inward investment will sit as part of a trio of functions alongside a chief planner role that I've brought in and also an assistant director for growth and regeneration that I've also brought in and will start with this in a couple of weeks' time. So a really strengthened frontline senior team able to engage proactively, both with funders, investors and developers, to really bring the city's aspirations forward at pace. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just discussing with the chief executive about one of the points in the recommendations. I think we can probably delete, Pippa, which is the third bullet point. I don't think we need any further consultation or any formal decision, I think that can be made today. So, go on, Matt.
I think what I'm clarifying, there needs the consultation to happen, but you can delegate that authority for the executive director in consultation with the leader as your portfolio to take that further. So what I'm saying is you don't need probably a cabinet, a further cabinet report to make the formal authority.
Happy to do that, we're all agreed with that. Basically, I think we can delete that, yes? In effect? Is that what we're saying? Or do you have a form of words?
My suggestion was to delete it.
Delete it, fine. So, Pippa, if we can delete bullet point three, I don't think it's necessary. Any consultation would just be that from staff, I would imagine, and those that are affected by any integration. I don't think that we're planning to make any changes per se. What I would say on public record is that the staff and the team have done a great job and they deserve more support from the council going forwards as to the roles that they will fulfill in the future. I would also like at this point to put on public record our grateful thanks to the board of Opportunity Peterborough for all the work that they've done over the years. And it is our intention to involve as many members of that limited company board in perhaps a future role with the council where they can assist, where they can assist, where they can assist the team still through the council directly rather than at arm's length through a limited company. So we'll work through all the details and any consultation required, but we can delegate that cabinet to the officers to determine. That's what we're basically saying, is that okay? And everything else stands there. So bullet points one, two and four, but I don't think we need to bring anything back to cabinet. All happy? Are you happy on my left here? Yes, Marco.
Thank you. I mean, one of the things that OP has been really, really good at is engaging the Peterborough business community. And certainly in the early years, it's one of the things that made it highly successful. Of course, you know, I'd like to take the credit for being partially responsible for setting it up.
You can have the full credit, we don't mind.
I will then, thank you, I will have it all, but anyway, but whatever. I would like, whatever we do and whatever happens and whatever recommendation comes back to us, I would stress that I think if we want it to succeed, we need to make sure that the Peterborough business community is still highly engaged in its future and in the work that it does.
I think we're saying the same things, that's what I've just alluded to, but the team need to work out the structure and the details of that, whether that's, quote, a business board or some other, shall we say, group of people, how we bring them together. You're right, I don't think we want to lose that expertise or that local connection to business through the council directly, because we've had some very, very good people that are on the board today and that have been on the board in the past, and I think we owe them a debt of gratitude, which we just acknowledged and will go on public record. So I think the process of how we reintegrate our economic functions back into the council, we can leave to the chief exec and the team to work that out with the team at OP, who will no doubt all be chuped directly into the council on salary. There are a few little things to work out, but that is just business, as it were, as usual. So the implication of what we're doing is to strengthen our economic development and delivery rather than diminish it, which probably at the moment, it's probably been a little lacking in love and attention. All agreed? Great, lovely. All right, so it's all those, it's all those bar bullet point three, which we struck that out and we didn't get any query on that from the team, so other than that, we're fine. Okay, we're moving to the home stretch. Budget Control Final Outturn Report twenty one twenty two, pages one oh seven to one fifty. Councillor Coles, again, I'll repeat, because he's probably watching, is on holiday, so lucky old him. So Cecilia Booth, and I don't see Kirsty, so Cecilia, do you want to say anything about this in terms of how it relates to the recommendations or anything you want to highlight?
No, there's nothing in particular I want to highlight. I think members have seen this report already and the detail of it. The final outturn position is that we have an underspend of four and a half million. So the overall position has shifted quite significantly over the last six months of the financial year. So the breakdown is in the report and is self-explanatory. I'm happy to take questions, but if there's no...
Just one second, just make sure. I think Matt wants to come in, yeah.
Just to follow on from Cecilia's comment there, I just think a formal note of thanks to the staff, managers who worked damn hard to deliver this. I think it's a significant improvement, that's down to the hard work, you as councillors as well, making some tough decisions. And I think we have got a lot of external scrutiny, this has been well received by various audiences, and I think it's no mean feat to deliver such a significant shift in terms of the spend position compared to where we were a few months back. So I think the message is we need to keep the moratorium in place with some checks and balances, so we're not out of the woods, as you've seen in other reports, but I think it's an extremely positive picture, somewhat masked by some of the Covid funding and the sort of extra bits and pieces from government through the year, and we were still in a high blown Covid situation for quite a bit of last year, but it's a very good position and a healthy position than what we had before. So I just want to echo, I know comms have got it on board, through the staff conversations, to give that formal note of thanks to staff as well.
Indeed, and I would echo that and all the hard work from the cabinet team as well in terms of steering the ship. We've made good progress, as I reported today. in terms of steering the ship. We've made good progress. As I reported today, press releases have gone out. I did a piece this morning on the BBC that talked about, we're not out of the woods yet, we all know that. But it's remarkable the progress we've made in terms of particularly on the 17 million pounds worth of savings, over 50% just after two months. But yes, the pressure is still on. I would also like to say on public record, I'm sure Cecilia would echo, that we've made a saving in the year ended, not in the current year. People seem to be misunderstanding that it's something in this year. And they also seem to think that we've got money to spend, whereas we don't have money to spend because our reserves position is 16% of what it should be in terms of 46% on average for our revenue spend. So the money has gone back into reserves because we are facing anywhere between five and 15 millions in terms of our opening balance for the forthcoming year. So people who think we can spend it on other things are mistaken because we are a long way from financial sustainability. I hope you would echo those comments. I'm getting a nod. So grateful thanks to all the team for the hard work. The recommendations are as printed on page 107, and it's items one to six. If we're agreed unanimously on all those, we can take them on block. Yes? I think that is good. So, Pippa, on the last item, the outcome of petitions, pages 151 to 156. They're just for noting, really, are they not? Unless anybody's got any questions on any of those, I won't go through them all. I think probably some of them are out of date. In any event, that we have moved on. And with that, I think I'll call the meeting to a close at item 13. And thank you all very much for attending this morning. And we are one minute past 12, which had I not waffled on for a minute, we would have been on time. So thank you all very much.